City Commission meeting of Monday, January 22, 2018. Let the record show that all commissioners are present. First thing up is Ms. Kessel, the order of business. Any changes to the order of business?
President Decker, there is under the reports, under 4E, just we've tried previously to set up a open meetings, open records training, and those dates that we had kind of fell apart. So Attorney Murtha would like to reestablish a date for that training.
Okay. So item number three. Any other changes, Mr. Kessel?
No other changes.
Any questions for Mr. Kessel on the order of business?
Make a motion to approve the order of business as stated now.
We have a motion to approve the order of business as amended.
Second.
For the second. Any further discussion? All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Order of business is approved. Consent agenda, is there anything on the consent agenda that commissioners would like to discuss?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
For the second. Any further discussion or questions on the consent agenda? Not, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Friedrich?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Consent agenda is approved. We have three timetables tonight, 5:00, a 5:15, and a 5:30. So we'll move on to the non-timetable. And the first thing up is our monthly financial report, and that will be handled by our accountant, Mr. Maury.
Thank you, President Decker. Starting off, as of December 1, 2017, this is just the latest update. The next month, after the last report that we gave you, the cash stayed about the same. Our net working cash total stayed at $48 million, which was the same as the presentation a month ago. In your packets was included our bank rec worksheet to give you an idea of how we come up with that number. And just as a reminder, so we, our general checking account is around $100,000. It sweeps from our money market account to keep that balance roughly around $100,000. And we take the general checking plus our money market to come up with our net working Also on that bank reconciliation worksheet that you received, you saw a number that was $34 million in investments. I just wanted to show you what makes up that $34 million. We have $6.9 million in the future fund, $14.9 million in our CMA account, and remaining about $13 million between our pensions and our OPEB account. We received about $163,000 interest and dividends in our future fund in 2017, and we received $341,000 in our CMA for 2017. So those are the accounts that make up the $34 million. This is also an update to last week's slide. I included the December 2017 collection for 1.5% sales tax. And again, just as a reminder, as Commissioner Friedrich stated last week, according to the State Treasurer's website, it's a December collection, but there is a leg, so it's not technically December revenue. Just to get, make everything on an exact 12-month basis, though, I included the last collection, which worked out to be about $883,000 for a total 1.5% sales tax, which put us at $8.3 million for the year to end 2017.
Mr. Maury, as a percentage, what were we up in sales tax? Do you have that, just percentage-wise?
From a previous year. I don't believe I have that with me right now.
I'm sure we can do the numbers quick.
Moving on to hospitality tax collected from 2008 to 2017. Again, we just added the December collection again, and that put us at a total of $915,000 to end 2017, which is a very slight increase from 2016. Our oil and gas production revenue stayed on a pretty consistent trend with, similar to what sales tax and hospitality tax were. We are still down from prior years. We finished 2017 monthly collections with $15.3 million, based on information from the State Treasurer's website. And I do want to remind as a note to the commission that, starting in September, the portion for Dickinson State University was taken out of our collections. We actually budgeted $16.7 million. That was before, you know, legislature did give the $2.5 million to Dickinson State University. So we did end up short of our budget, but I believe everyone was aware that was going Moving on to our utility revenues. This is just a five-year summary of our total utility revenues. Includes water, sewer, solid waste, stormwater, consumption amounts, meter charges, and you also received a breakdown of this in your packet as well. But as you can see, we're pretty similar to where we've been in past years. We do have an increase from 2016. And I also want to remind the commission, this is recorded in a similar way to what our state taxes are collected. Our auditors do have us move money from the January collections back into the prior year. So some money will be moved back, and these numbers will change the next time they're presented to you. That concludes the financial report. If there's any questions, I'll do my best to answer those at this time.
Any questions for Mr. Maury?
Just one question. Our accounts were receivable. Over 90 days, we hit about 28%. $130,000, do you know what that's from?
Oh, yes. I don't have the information with me, but I can get you a breakdown if you'd prefer to see where that number actually comes from.
Well, I'm just curious. It's quite a big chunk to carry at 90 days past due. Is that utilities we haven't collected? They're late?
It very well could be. I honestly, Commissioner Friedrich, don't have an answer for you at this time. But that is something, we do have the capability to get a report for you. So at the next financial presentation, we would be happy to include that in your packet.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Maury? Now I'd look for a motion to approve the financial report.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the financial report with a second. Any further discussion or questions for Mr. Maury?
Mr. President, just a comment. Thank you for the additional slides for the 1% sales tax, 1.5%. That's what we were missing for a few years there, so it's nice to see the accumulations and to compare from the years before. So thank you again.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments or questions for Mr. Maury? Now we'll go ahead and vote. Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Friedrich?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Financial report is approved. Next up is Mr. Kessel, North Parking Lot.
Thank you, President Decker. This item is listed as a, an item that requires action, but it technically doesn't. It's simply a report for you. We have gone over portions of tonight's information in the past, but this is meant to be a little more comprehensive. You all should have received a link to all of the video discussions that were held at the City Commission level each time that there was a report on this topic. We began discussing this topic in July at our budget meeting. Unfortunately, there is no video of that discussion, but there is of all the remainder of the items. And it was talked about at our August 7, September 5, September 8, October 2, October 16, and December 18. Those are all the times that we did have discussions about the North Parking Lot. Probably the most significant discussions were the ones that took place that, where there was motions made and approved. And probably the most significant of those, other than approving the sale of the land, was the limitation of $100,000 being placed on the construction of the parking lot itself. That limitation was made back in September, I believe it was. And then at the October meeting on the 16th, we realized that expenses were going to be a little bit higher as staff than expected, and presented those to the City Commission. We unfortunately only had three members of the City Commission there during that presentation. And so there was another presentation made regarding the use of the building construction fund and using those dollars to augment the previously approved $100,000 for the construction of the lot. That did get passed in December. You, as a City Commission, took action on December 18 to approve up to $170,000 for the creation of the North Lot, along with several other items that were approved with the construction, the building construction fund. So the project now, I think, deviates. What we've heard as staff is that you want us to change our past practice, which is to, you know, we use fund accounting in government, and so when we look at a project, we looked at it by fund. And so when we looked at this project, and specifically I'll say, when I looked at this project, I reported to you the construction costs of the parking lot. We did not include sidewalk. We did not include other items that would be paid for from separate funds, which would include some of the landscaping. You also approved funds for signage in the building construction. So all of those dollars were not included when I reported to you on construction costs. Moving forward, that is our intention. It appears, if that is the City Commission's desires, we'll report projects based on the totality of the project and not based on the fund that they're coming from. So you'll actually receive, most likely, project revenues from several sources. So I think that's one of the big takeaways from us, is to deviate from that past practice in that way. And there are a few things that remain yet to be taken care of on that lot. It's being used, it has been being used for several weeks now, but the snow fell before we could get it striped. That's a minimal cost, $1,500, maybe even less. The major cost yet to complete that is landscaping. So the level of landscaping that we would like to do, the type of fence that may be put up, the amount of trees that we would put up, and if there's any dollars available, lighting that would be put up. I don't think there's going to be funds for lighting, so I don't think that's a project cost we can afford. But we can do some of, we'll certainly take care of the striping, and we'll make sure that we fall within the $170,000 budget with the landscaping that remains. So I'd like to entertain any questions that commissioners have with the video provided and the written report. Hopefully that answers any questions that may, may have been lingering with regard to this project.
Any questions for Mr. Kessel?
I'll have some comments and questions on the South Parking Lot, but I'll let the North Parking Lot comments go now.
Mr. President, just some questions. I thought we approved everything out of that construction fund except the parking lot.
I made that.
We tabled that, so that, we actually have not approved that. Is that correct?
I made that motion, yes. That's correct. At the December 18 meeting, we approved everything except for the funds on the parking lot.
So if you read the minutes from that meeting, it says to approve the encumbrances of the parking lot, library improvements, parking lot signage, quality-of-life initiative, and to approve the training simulator and Theodore Roosevelt Airport.
I would say we need to look at the video because I, for sure, remember that we tabled that portion of it.
We did.
Because that's when I raised all the questions on how we went over $100,000.
We can certainly do that.
I think we need clarification on this.
And the second thing is, I want to see every dollar spent on this parking lot broke out in some kind of report. I mean, I don't, if we took it from a coffee can under somebody's desk, I want to know how much it was and what we spent it on.
I think staff can accommodate that.
Yeah, we can certainly do that.
But I think we do need to verify that Mrs. Trustum tabled that, so.
Just my last thing on this. I don't know how you guys all feel about it, but to me, when we get a report that this is what something's going to cost, I expect that's every, I don't care where the fund, how we're paying for it, but I expect that that's what it's going to cost from every fund that we're taking it out of and every expenditure we're making on it. You guys have a different idea than that? I mean, I understand fund accounting, but it doesn't matter what fund it comes from, it's what it actually costs. If I'm off base here.
If no one else has comment, I would agree with Mr. Friedrich. We need to know exact cost of projects. We don't need to, to, I guess, nitpick every little item, but we do need to know the total cost, because we are spending the public's money. And just because we can conveniently pull $20,000 out of a different fund, and it doesn't have to go under parking lot, doesn't mean it is ultimately what it costs for us to do a project.
And, Mr. President, I mean, it goes back to the sale of the South Parking Lot. You know, we were under the impression that we would be able to cover all the costs with that initial $100,000 sale. So I think it's important that, as you said, regardless of the funds, that we have a good idea of the total cost of that project, so that we can prevent future issues like this one.
And then, just expanding on that, when and if we do get this $100,000 from the sale of the South Lot, where is that money going to go now, since we found another fund to take this out of? Where are we going to earmark that money for? Is that?
Generally with the, it would go back into the general fund, since the reallocation that you've made from the, well, that we'll check to make sure that you've made.
Like, that came out of the building fund.
Would it go into the general fund, or wouldn't it go into the future fund, because it's a city land sale? And city land sales go into the future fund.
The first $50,000 of land sales that happen in a year go into the future fund, and anything above and beyond that would stays into the general fund.
I don't think we've been selling a whole lot lately.
That was set in motion at, when the city had hundreds of lots out there for sale. And they were being purchased fast, and that's what we did.
Yep. There's one lot that's an exception to that rule, where all of the proceeds would go to the future fund, and that is the lot that's immediately west of the middle school. That was a motion by the commission to make sure that all of the funds go, because you used the future fund to buy it, those revenue sources. So it's, you wanted it all returned.
I think, Mr. Kessel, we need clarification on that motion from Mrs. Trustum. And then I think we do need a complete report on the total cost of this, so we can be upfront with the public on what this is costing us. And then hopefully we'll have an update on the sale.
I'd like to ask a couple of questions on that.
Yes, Mr. Steiner said he would defer, so.
So at the last meeting, we presented them with a contract?
A purchase agreement, correct. That is correct, Commissioner Steiner.
In the contract, how much earnest money did we ask for, Alan?
I believe it was $10,000.
$10,000. Have we heard from them yet?
Yes. They, upon receipt of the contract, there was a couple of the terms that they wanted clarification on, and we talked on Friday, or I had a conversation with Mr. Seave on Friday, and, you know.
Did they sign the contract?
No, they've not signed the contract yet.
Did they give a earnest money yet?
No, they've not done that yet, either.
How many days do we allow them to keep that contract, if they're returning it?
If you'd like to address that, Attorney Murtha?
30 days. Mr. President, members of the commission, they have the, the purchase agreement has been sent. Shortly after the purchase agreement was sent, they received an email back, and then Mr. Kessel had a follow-up conversation about some of the clarifications, the terms. They asked that I provide a Word document so that they could make comments and suggested changes. So I did that, and we are waiting for a return of that to see what they're, how they're proposing the clarifications be made. I have not got an estimate on it, but given the fact that there was a conversation very recently, I anticipate that it coming back. If it goes beyond a couple of weeks, we'll be contacted again.
Can you recall what some of their concerns were with the contract?
I defer to Mr. Kessel, and he had a more involved conversation.
Commissioner Steiner, I can talk with you about that. The first one was the issuance of a liquor license. They are interested in receiving a beer and wine license as part of their operations.
But at that meeting, they said they were not going to be interested in liquor and wine. So now they're, outside of the meeting, they're going to say they want liquor license.
That's correct. That was one of the points.
In that contract, I'm assuming that you aren't going to guarantee them that?
No, what we, what was in the original, as it was sent to them, was a three-year moratorium that they couldn't apply for a liquor license. They would like to apply for a beer and wine license. You, as a City Commission, are the ones who grant those. So they'll have to come and make an application and qualify via our.
They're going to be serving food in there, so, I mean, in lieu, I mean, they would qualify for the restaurant.
I would assume that they'll, yes, that they would assume. You have to have at least 50% of your sales be food, and I think that they would qualify at first blush, but, yeah, so they technically could be eligible for a few. The restaurant license is more expensive, so I expect that they'll come in for beer and wine. They don't want to sell hard liquor, just beer and wine.
Any other changes?
Yes, there was a discussion with regard to liquidated damages, the.
Regarding the lot that they would store their construction company on, or their construction materials?
This would be related to meeting the timeframe. We put an 18-month timeframe. If they go beyond that, then there's liquidated damages that are included. There was a discussion regarding those. And then the other item would be the item you just brought up, Commissioner Steiner.
You did address that with them?
Correct.
What was, what was the content of that?
They are, they would prefer not to be charged for the space, and, as you can expect. But I did bring that up, that the commission is, desires of a fee.
I prefer we charge them for the use of our parking lot and the damages resulting from the construction materials. So if that's a problem, we should address it. But, you know, here again, a lot of construction company use our lot, and they have damages, and it's done, and we're going to stick $100,000 into repair and so on, and I'm going to have a problem with that. You know, so, I think we need to address that.
Yeah. Commissioner Steiner, we've not received yet how the language will look when it returns, but I did make them well aware that we were intending to charge them for that.
Anything else?
Those are the ones that come to the top of my head. I don't think there was anything else. Ms. Murtha?
A slight rephrase with, it was a request to rephrase some of the language with regards to the specific type of seating that was involved. They thought a simpler, a simpler description of the seating inside the theater was sufficient, as opposed to attaching an exhibit with pictures.
I'm going to assume that that contract is invalid until we sign off on everything that we've talked about.
Correct.
We'll come back.
Yeah, we'll bring that back.
All right. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions for Mr. Kessel?
Mr. President, my only question for Mr. Kessel is, you know, I know you're going to bring back a detailed report, but just so we can start thinking about it now, what kind of other changes did you want to add to the parking lot? Or additions did you want to make?
To the North Parking Lot?
Right.
The landscaping issues that remain is, should we put up a fence along the southern border? There is a dwelling unit, and putting up a fence there might help to provide some privacy to that dwelling unit. We don't have to, we're not required by ordinance to do that. It would be more of a courtesy. The other thing is, is what type of fence, if we do put up a fence? It's probably in our best interest to put up some kind of fence, just simply to redirect people so that they're not walking on the property itself. We want to make sure that they're respecting the owner's property rights. The, and then beyond that, it's simply the type of greenery that will be there, trees, and how many will be planted, and then a signage. As we've stated before, we want to go through and label all of the city-owned parking lots and clearly state the type of parking that's allowed in those lots. So those are the things that remain, and then the striping, I've mentioned previously.
And then can you bring forward just a rough idea on cost?
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Kessel on the parking lot?
I guess the only other thing, so you're going to bring back what we spent and what we need to spend?
Correct.
That's going to be the break.
Yeah.
That's all.
That's my intent, yeah.
And then clarification on Mrs. Trustum's motion.
Yeah.
I don't think we need to approve anything on this.
Do we need a motion to table it? Or do we have to do any of them?
Well, this was.
Oh, it's just a report, I guess?
Yeah, it was more or less a report, so. I think we can get this next item done. We have a liquor license. Mr. Kessel?
The Legacy 7 Liquor LLC holds a license. They do business, they have been doing business as Lucky's Vintage Liquor. They simply want to change their title or their name. The Legacy 7 Liquor LLC will stay the same, so the license holder will be the same, but the doing business as will, they'll drop vintage from their license. So they still have to go through the process. It's a much easier process than obtaining the license, but nevertheless, that change did trigger our process. So they, they've, we've done all the background that we need to do, and we are recommending the change from Legacy 7 Liquor LLC DBA Lucky's Vintage to Legacy 7 Liquor LLC DBA Lucky's Liquor.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Kessel on this, I guess, change of name on liquor license?
Move to approve, Mr. President.
Second.
We have a motion to approve with a second. Any further questions or comments? Now we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Friedrich?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The liquor license change is approved. We have like three minutes. I don't know if we want to get into this RFP. You want to start on it?
I could introduce you. I don't know if we'll get through it, but.
Okay.
So the RFP that the City Commission authorized has been, so we had four submitted companies, Icon, JLG, Land Elements, and Rundell Ernst Berger, all submitted proposals in response to the RFP. The Downtown Task Force members scored those RFPs, that being DSU President Tom Mitzel, Commissioner Jennings-Trustum, Kristi Schwartz, who's the board chair for the Downtown Association, Mr. Gillick, who is the Economic Development Director at Stark Development, and Chris Bitterer, who represents retail in the downtown. I also filled one out, and so did Engineer Kubis. And the results of those were that JLG Architects would be our recommendation to engage them in a contract. You actually have a motion stated for you in the memo. They were also one of the least expensive options for us, at a fixed fee of $25,000. And they are going to charge a $2,000 rendering cost. So if we have multiple renderings created, it would cost about $2,000 apiece for those. But it is the recommendation of the Downtown Task Force that JLG Architects be engaged to conduct the study, the downtown study.
Okay, I guess that's some. Okay, I guess that's some food for thought, or I guess we'll pause here. And we have a five o'clock timetable. Chief Dossinger?
Hi, good evening, Mr. President, members of the commission. Tonight, Agent Rob Fattno and Agent Chris Kimerly from the North Dakota BCI are going to do a presentation on the Southwest Narcotics Task Force and some of the activities that we've seen in 2017.
I'm not sure which way to go with the clicker here, so. Okay, I'm going to go through real briefly, Mr. President, commissioners, I'm going to go through briefly some stats as far as seizures and things like that, but then I'm going to get down to actually show you. You know, graphs are all fine and dandy, but that's not where the rubber meets the road, and we'll talk about that shortly. 2017, we seized 21,000 grams worth of marijuana. We expended approximately $23,000 in buy fund monies to purchase controlled substances and to pay confidential informants for the purchase of those substances, which is down a little bit from 2016. We've investigated a total of 134 narcotics cases in 2017, which is up from 2016. 2017, we had 58 narcotics arrests. That number appears low, and the reason being is many of those investigations are still in the process, and those arrests haven't been made yet, so they'll be reflected in this next year's chart. Assets seized, as you can see here, 70 firearms we seized from search warrants and drug traffickers and people involved in the drug trafficking world this year, which is astronomically higher than, you know, all other years, which is becoming a bigger and bigger trend constantly. Currency seized by drug traffickers or from drug traffickers, people involved in drug trafficking organizations, $42,769 in 2017. Methamphetamine seized in 2017 is 1,881 grams. I can tell you that we are halfway through the month of January, and we've, we're over half of that right now. So things are definitely picking up. Lab seizures, were up a little bit in 2017. We had none in 16 and one in 17, which is one too many. Heroin seizures, as everybody's aware of, you know, on the press, and we've had four deaths in Dickinson. We've had dozens of heroin overdoses and fentanyl overdoses involving the need for Narcan and hospitalization. Fentanyl seizures are due to roughly 233 grams of fentanyl. It takes, fentanyl sold in tenth, tenth of grams, so in one gram, there's 10 dosage units, and fentanyl is one of the most dangerous things that ever hit the planet. Cocaine seizures were up in 2017, significantly over 2016. Hallucinogenic drugs, marijuana, LSD, and those things were up a little bit in 2017. MDMA or ecstasy seizures were down. That's not something we see here very frequently, thank goodness. Prescription drugs are also down, and part of the reason for that, in my opinion, is because of the high amount of opiates and the availability of heroin and fentanyl and some of the fentanyl analogs that are hitting the street. Drug Task Force, our future. We have manpower challenges. Recently, we lost a task force officer because of a loss in oil grant. In 2014, we had $190,000 in oil grant money. This year, we have none. So we, we lost a position, which is extremely detrimental in our ability to investigate cases. Some of the financial challenges we're seeing is that we typically get JAG and lottery funding. Those monies have been held up in litigation fed, on a federal level, based on sanctuary cities, so we're not getting any of that at this time, and it's gone down from $42,000 last year to $31,000 this year, so it funds part of our position. We're continuing to see our, our grant monies go away, and what that means to us is that we have two additional bodies we're, we're at risk of losing, and essentially, that's crippling for a task force. It takes a certain number of bodies to go out and conduct an investigation, to go out and buy heroin, buy methamphetamine, do search warrants, and with our monies dwindling and grant dollars dwindling, our ability to do that is greatly decreased. Now, I actually brought--
Can I ask you, the money that you confiscate, does that go to the state?
It goes into an asset forfeiture account pending--
The state or our asset?
Nope. It stays with the task force, pending forfeiture. So in order to get forfeited, the judge has to, there's legal action involved, and the judge forfeits that.
Okay.
Or returns it to the owner.
But it'll stay in the southwest?
Yes.
That's the same with the property too, right?
Yes. There's a national, there's a big trend, though, about asset forfeiture reform and wanting it to go to the general fund, which is just a huge, to be completely honest, it's a huge mistake, you know? The way you target drug trafficking organizations, they don't care about losing their two and a half pounds of methamphetamine. That's business as usual. You want to affect a drug trafficking organization, you take their currency, you take their, their things that are actually tangible to them, so they can buy guns and buy those kind of things that are needed to do their business, so. May I approach and--
Yep.
--show you exactly what? A couple of years ago, in Dickinson, this would have been $100,000 worth of methamphetamine. It's about two and a half pounds. It was selling for, it wasn't uncommon, uncommon for us to spend $4,000 for an ounce of it, and now there's so much of it here, we're paying, or $800 to $1,000 a ounce. So what used to be $25, $30,000 worth is now $80,000. Black car heroin, we've seen huge resurgence of heroin. There are multiple kinds. It's a, they would refer to as like a Mexican brown. We're also seeing this mix of fentanyl and fentanyl analogs. There's enough heroin in here to kill everybody in the building. And this is the kind of thing, this is where the rubber actually meets the road. You know, we don't have bodies go out and do these investigations, we don't have the ability to go out and do these investigations. This is what destroys our area, the southwest part of the state. Some of the other controlled substances we're seeing are the fentanyl analogs, and Special Agent Kimerly was kind enough to just let you know how dangerous some of these are. These are fake. These aren't real. Don't panic. Morphine, for example, heroin is twice as strong to morphine. Fentanyl is 100 times power, more powerful than morphine. Carfentanyl is 10,000 times more powerful than morphine. Legitimately, one piece of carfentanyl, they can do, it's resistant to Narcan, it's resistant to all those kind of drugs that are being used to bring people back out of their state of immuguration, or bring them back to life, essentially. So that pretty much wraps up my presentation.
Any, any questions for Agent Fattno?
Mr. President, Mr. Fattno, thank you, first of all, for that presentation. I think, you know, it's good to see and realize that this is a real problem in our area, and I think for most of us, we may not always recognize that, out of sight, out of mind. But we're seeing more and more, especially through the media, that that's not the case, that it's right next to us in, in many situations. You know, you're talking about grant funding and a loss thereof. Where are these grants coming from? Are these state-funded grants?
Well, the oil grant, to be honest, I don't know. I think that was a state-funded grant, isn't it? And then the JAG lottery is a federally funded grant, and it's being held up because of the sanctuary cities, and that's continued to decrease over the years. You know, these grants were never designed to fully fund positions. They were only designed to get the positions started so that the participating agencies could absorb those positions as the grants run out, and that's where we're at.
And what can, you know, what, what can we do to help? Or what is out there to kind of help benefit our Southwest Task Force?
You know, the, the chief here is wanting to support some of these positions, and the thing that we really need help with is funding for them. That's the bottom line, that's the end of the, end of the line. We need funding for those positions, or they're going to go away.
One of the items, and I've spoke at length with Chief Dossinger about this, and this is nothing new, we've talked about this in the public. We've talked about increasing our sales tax from 1.5 to 2%, a half percent as a, as a safety tax to go to our law enforcement and our fire services and emergency services as, in general. And, and part of that, that money will, will help, will hopefully help fund some of these agents. I know I, I spoke yesterday with one of our, our federal candidates, and I made an issue to bring up about the funding and the challenges with, you know, the opioids out here and, and just in general, all the drug traffic, and, and having some, you know, possible federal presence. Williston got FBI agents, what, four years ago?
Yeah, it's been several years.
Anything helps out here, so I, I know that, I've been telling people about our challenges, so.
Do all our officers have Narcan available to them?
Yes, Commissioner Steiner, our officers started carrying Narcan approximately about a year ago, and one of the things that I was concerned about is actually the shelf life of them and the cost associated with it. Well, we already placed another order for Narcan. That's how bad of a problem we have on our streets right now in the city of Dickinson. Keep in mind that the numbers you've seen and the statistics you've seen here do not include the drug arrests that the Dickinson Police Department made. These are just Southwest Narcotics Drug Task Force statistics, so that doesn't include the Dickinson Police Department numbers at all. We talked a little bit about the, the funding and the public safety tax, and that would be a huge, huge win for, for the Dickinson Police Department. The problem associated with that is realistically, we wouldn't see any funding if that measure was passed. We wouldn't see any money associated with that till probably 2020. The, the challenge we face right now is that one time, this task force consisted of six task force officers. Right now, we are down to three, and we're on the verge of going down to two. And we're also on the verge of losing our analyst position as well, which the analyst position is really the glue that molds all this together. So right now, we have a serious dilemma on our hands. We should be adding task force officers. We shouldn't be worried how to fund existing positions. We are taking a step back. Our problem is increasingly growing, and we need to come up, as a community, we've got to figure out what we're going to do to combat the, combat the problem. We have people literally dying on our streets from the heroin and fentanyl issue. We have to do something about it.
And Chief Dossinger, I mean, a lot of our numbers are skewed in that we really have no idea how many people are in the emergency room or being taken to the hospital for possible drug overdoses. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So we really have no idea how big this problem is in a lot of ways.
That's correct. We only know about the ones that are reported to us.
Right.
And another aspect to all this, too, is, and I know Agent Fattno and the chief is the behavioral health out here, the addiction counseling, the mental health counseling, and I know we've been working with, you know, the feds and local agencies to get that up and running and hopefully get into the, the old hospital. I don't know, we probably need a report on that, where that's at in an upcoming meeting here, but I think that's a huge piece to this puzzle also, because we have a huge revolving door, and, and you deal with it all the time. And we have people that they get off the streets, they get them in, they don't get the proper treatment, they come right back out and they're doing the same bad things again, and you're just dealing with them.
We've had one young lady, early twenties, overdose four times in two and a half days, so, four ambulance rides, multiple hits on Narcan. It's amazing, quite a great sketch, she's still here.
Any other questions for the chief or Agent Fattno?
I guess I have had conversations with Mr. Kessel regarding the dilemma that we're in with the funding of the Drug Task Force, and I had told him that I will be bringing a plan to him with some solutions, but I suspect that you'll be seeing me in front of the podium in the near future, asking for some funding help.
I would like to see that.
Yeah, I, I don't think you're going to see a lot of resistance. I think we have a problem, we need to deal with it. So we just got to find the proper funding mechanism, so.
President, I'd like to--
Mr. Kessel?
Chief Dossinger, could you give the group a little more background on, when we say Southwest North Dakota, what exactly does that mean? What's the geography that we're talking about?
Yes, it actually encompasses an area from Richardson to Montana State Line and south. We serve all those counties, we serve all those jurisdictions. Geez, I can't recall all the names of the counties off the top of my head, I apologize. But there's, it's a large area. I mean, it's a huge, we have the biggest geographical area of any task force in the state, and yet the fewest number of people to deal with.
Is Dunn County separate, or is Dunn County--
Dunn County is, right now, it's separated from us.
And Mr. Fattno, do you plan on giving those counties the same presentation in hopes that they would be willing to--
Yes, ma'am. We have given it several county commission meetings and city commission meetings and have received additional funding, because, you know, it's not, it's not equitable across the board. Some of these small rural counties pay a relatively small amount per year to participate, you know, it might be $4,000 a year, and other counties, you know, Hager County, we did a presentation to the commission, and they immediately upped it to $10,000 per buy-in per year. So it was, it, it is effective, and to be quite honest, that's why I brought this today, because number, you know, it's all fine and dandy to look on a chart, but unless you see what two and a half pounds of meth looks like and enough heroin to kill everybody in the building looks like, it doesn't mean anything, you know, it's numbers.
Any more questions? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
We're at 5:15, Mr. Kessel, and I think the chief will probably just stay up here. You've got some officers to swear in. It's always a good thing, right?
It's always a good thing. Good evening, again. I have two officers I'd like to swear in tonight. Officer Tristan Tokash is from Mandan, North Dakota. He was enlisted as an assistant gunner team leader in the US Army, 11B entry unit, from June of 2014 to September 2017. Tristan also served a nine-month combat tour in Afghanistan. The other officer, Jonathan Avalos, is from Benson, Minnesota, where he's working as a security officer at Target Field for the Minnesota Twins. He graduated from Alexandria Technical and Community College in May of 2017 with an Associate of Applied Science degree in law enforcement. At this time, I'd like them to step forward and be sworn in by Administrator Kessel.
Okay, would you both please raise your right hand and repeat after me? I state your name.
Aye, Tristan Tokash.
Will support, obey, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States.
Will support, obey, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States.
The state of North Dakota and the city of Dickinson.
The state of North Dakota and the city of Dickinson.
To the best of my ability and that I will strive always to meet the highest ethical standards.
To the best of my ability and that I will strive always to meet the highest ethical standards.
Implicit in my employment and in the furtherance of the best public interest.
Implicit in my employment and in furtherance of the best public interest.
Thank you, gentlemen. Welcome aboard. Very nice to meet you both. Do a nice signing. Feel free, while he's signing, to introduce yourself to the city commission and give a little bit more background, if you're willing, than Chief Dossinger has already given.
All right, well, again, I'm Jonathan Avalos. I was recently hired, I'm still in the FTO program, and I just want to thank you all. I'm loving it here, it's a great department, and I really think I've made a great decision here. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. My name is Tristan Tokash. I'm 21 years old, I'm from Mandan, originally from Dickinson, so it's kind of a new experience, new city, new people. This is my first department, and I'm honored to be a part of this department and a part of this community. It's a really good community you guys have here, just from what I've experienced so far, and I'm really excited to be able to progress and further my career in law enforcement within this community. Thank you.
Well, welcome aboard.
Welcome.
Welcome. Good to see another grunt running around in town.
Tristan has family here, too? Would you like to stand up?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. So my father joined us today, Tom Tokash, he's from Mandan as well, and my mother, Lynn Crawford.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have a little bit of a gap here. We have about 10 more minutes until the introduction of our new K-9. So we'll go back to-- the introduction of our new K-9. So, we'll go back to the RFP.
I'll be happy to answer any questions that the commission has regarding the RFP. As I mentioned, both Commissioners Altman's and Trustam were part of the process as well.
Mr. President, I can give a little background if you'd like. So, the four companies we had before us had great RFPs, and we were asked to just rate them accordingly based on location, proximity, time available, cost. I think that the board made a great decision with JLG. You know, not only do they have a local presence, but they have some background in this area. And I'm confident in who the board has chosen.
I would echo that. They stood out way beyond any of the others that were considered. And I think we're going to be very happy with the results from them.
I would agree.
No, I just have the one chart here. Was there additional enclosure that we were supposed to get? I just have the rating chart.
I think that's all we included. I do have the individual presentations, if you would like me to distribute those to the commission.
I thought there was a-
Get it in one of the binders.
Yeah. No, I saw the binder. I don't need that for the war chest. The, I was just wondering if there was an actual contract attached that we could see. Okay.
No, if the city commission chooses to engage JLG, we'll go back and negotiate the contract with them. But the important pieces are, of course, the dollars. And in the motion that's in the memo, it does limit those to the $25,000 fixed fee and the rendering cost of $2,000 apiece.
Okay. So, what Mr. Kessel just alluded to, if we open up your memos, there is the motion in there with specific dollar amounts. So, if we're looking to pursue this contract with JLG, I would look for a motion with that language. If not, does it entertain a different motion?
I would move to engage JLG Architects to conduct the downtown square revisions for a fixed fee of $25,000 and a rendering fee of $2,000 each.
I would second that.
So, we have a motion to approve the $25,000 with $2,000 for rendering with a second. Any more comments or questions for Mr. Kessel on this RFP? Very none will vote. Mrs. Trustam?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Friedrich?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. RFP is approved. We still have about eight minutes. Mr. Kessel, you have a couple items in, oh, we have three things in the report, so.
We do. The first one is quite simply a thank you from the Rough Rider Commission. They do receive dollars from the city commission, and they just wanted, they wrote a nice letter thanking us for the funds that they were provided. So, that's contained within your document. The other one is the Southwest Water Authority. There is a vacancy on that Southwest Water Authority Board, and it is the city commission who has the ability to fulfill that vacancy. In order to do that, you have to do it with somebody who is a qualified elector in North Dakota. That is not that difficult in North Dakota. You have to be 18 years of age, and I believe it is established residency for three months. I'll have to verify the three-month number, but I believe that to be accurate. Southwest Water then has another qualifying feature, and that is you have to reside within the city of Dickinson. Their board is made up of mostly county commission. The city of Mandan has one specific board member. The city of Dickinson has two. So, we actually vote in the city of Dickinson for three board members, two representing the city and one representing Stark County. This is a city elected, or a city position, so they do have to reside within our corporate city limits. In the past, how we have engaged people to be on commissions like this, or bodies of recommendation, is we've used the citizen interest form. That way, we have some background on the individual that is shown an interest in this, or in these types of positions. That form is located on our website at www.dickinsongov.com. If you prefer to call, we can certainly forward out, email or mail out a citizen interest form for anybody who is interested in being on this Southwest Water Commission. This appointment would be for the remaining term. So, that would go until 2012. I believe it's June of 2000, or excuse me, 2020. So, we're looking at about a two-year period of time. Our thought is that we will distribute, any citizen interest forms that we receive between now and the next city commission day, we will provide them to you at the next city commission meeting. That will allow you to do due diligence on all of the submissions. And then at the February 20th meeting, you can actually make your decision with regard to an appointment. And then their first meeting of the Southwest Water Authority after that is March 5th. Those meetings generally are the first, I believe it's Monday or Tuesday of the month. They last around three to four hours. So, your commitment for these meetings are rather lengthy. It's almost like a city commission meeting, but it is only once a month. They do have an occasional special meeting, and they do have some training outside of those established regular monthly board meetings. I did talk to Mary Massid on more than one occasion with regards to this process. If anybody is interested in becoming appointed, they should complete the citizen interest form. If you'd like more information, I would encourage a conversation with Ms. Massid. And you can certainly contact the commissioner as well to state your interest. If that pleases the board, that's the process that I would recommend.
Do we, the dates that are set, are they hard dates?
Absolutely.
I mean, if we have no applications by, or qualifying applications?
No, absolutely not. There's the only, this assumes that we'll have a few at least applications. And speaking with Ms. Massid, if we bump this another month, she's okay with that as well.
Okay. I was just wondering if that was something we needed to get the word out, or is it just if?
Do you know whose term for the remainder?
Mr. Stang.
Yeah. Yeah, Mr. Larry Stang passed away. I bring that up just to thank him for his service.
Yes.
That would conclude my report on this item. And then the only other item then is the training for the open meetings and open records. And I will yield the floor to Ms. Murtha.
Mr. President, members of the commission, I just wanted to offer to you that there have been changes this last legislative session. There were many updates to the open records and meetings law that are pertinent to governmental entities. And they're very, especially to boards. And so, in order to convey those updates to you, because they are in effect currently, and to talk about any attorney general's opinion that might be of interest to you, again, relating to municipalities, I wanted to offer to provide open records and meetings training. And it seems as though with everyone's schedules, it might be of benefit to have it either before, during, or after a city commission meeting. So, is it a time when you've already, we've already dedicated that time to the commission meeting? So, I just wanted to convey that. And if there's a particular date that you have in mind, we can certainly set aside the time again before, during, or after the meeting if you'd be interested.
I would not be opposed to just doing it after on a meeting night. We're here anyway, so.
I would agree with that. Since we've already dedicated our Monday, or soon to be Tuesday evening, I guess what we need to look at is if we have a lighter commission meeting, so we're not here a long time just for the commission meeting. And then, you know, you pencil us in for that and just let us know when we have a lighter agenda, then we'll just do that in February here.
And not to, and just to let you know, approximately 45 minutes to an hour. So, definitely not a two-hour or type of-
Well, a few of us here have had nine o'clock commission meetings. And I'm actually the rookie on that. There are two gentlemen on each side of me. They spent many nights here for a while. So, but, no, I think, I think that would work out.
Yep.
Do it afterwards.
I will coordinate with the same ministry then on an appropriate date. Thank you.
Sounds like a plan. Thank you. We have 5:30. Chief Dossinger, we also have a new officer.
Well, we have to switch gears from swearing in a two-legged individual to a four-legged individual here. But I'd like to take the time and the opportunity to introduce to our community our newest K-9 recruit, Kalo. At this time, I'd like to ask Sergeant Corey Lee, who's in charge of our K-9 program, and Senior Officer Jaden Peters to come up and talk a little bit about what led up to us getting a new K-9 in the city of Dickinson.
Good evening, everyone. Good to see you again. Unfortunately, age 40 has brought me the need for glasses here, and I'm fighting it. So, try to bear with me here. Going to give you a little background on the K-9 program here a little bit and what we've got going on here with our new guy here. Back in 2013, the Dickinson Police Department retired its longtime K-9 veteran, K-9 Buster. This retirement came in the midst of the oil boom, and the department was recognizing and trying to adjust to its changing needs. These changing needs affected the K-9 program as well. Fundraising effort began at that time to replace K-9 Buster with a dual-purpose trained police K-9. The outpouring of support to our needs and efforts was overwhelming. Businesses and the general public alike provided donations that not only covered the cost of a dual-purpose patrol K-9, but also allowed us to purchase a much-needed second single-purpose K-9, narcotic-detecting K-9. K-9 Nico was selected as the second K-9, was introduced to our department in the fall of 2013. During K-9, Nico's four years with the DPD, K-9 Nico was responsible for over 100 narcotics-related arrests and seizures. Nico and her handler, Officer Jaden Peters, were also highly respected among their peers when it came to participating and competing in narcotics detection challenges around the state. In fact, the duo did something no one else has yet to do and may possibly never do again, and that's claim first place at the yearly North Dakota Peace Officers Association K-9 competition and unprecedented three times. Several K-9 teams participate in this challenge each year. Many of them will go their whole career without even placing at this event. And these two were able to win it three years out of the four years they were together, which is a pretty amazing feat. More important than the awards, K-9 Nico was a beloved member of our community and our department. She was always welcome in the schools and was a valuable tool used to aid in education in regards to danger of narcotics and illicit substances, excuse me. What was once a boring talk about drugs now became an interesting and fun event with the implantation of Nico and her irresistible personality. In early October of 2017, K-9 Nico and Officer Peters had their largest find to date. They located and seized over 11 pounds of marijuana accompanied by a loaded handgun. Unfortunately, this find would be their last. On October 15th, 2017, at approximately 3:00 PM, K-9 Nico passed away from an unexpected and catastrophic health issue, excuse me. Myself and Officer Peters were with K-9 Nico as she took her last breaths and passed away peacefully. Excuse me, I'm a weenie. Nico's passing was not only a huge loss for our department, but the Peters family and our community as well. Following the passing of K-9 Nico, we took some time to re-group and evaluate. With dangerous narcotic usage on the rise in our community in our region, we decided we did not want to be short in any assets in our attempt to keep these substances out and away from our community as much as possible. Once we made our intentions to purchase a replacement K-9 known to the public, the response and support we have received from businesses and private citizens again alike has once again been nothing short of amazing. And we thank all of those people that thus far helped us. In December, I began the process of searching for and selecting a K-9. Was able to locate a few candidates from a trusted vendor I have previously worked with and whom is located just outside of the Twin Cities. I traveled there to test and evaluate these K-9 candidates just after the new year and ultimately selected K-9 Kalo to be our next and newest Dickinson Police K-9 recruit. K-9, that was just a little kid slipped there. That was emotional. K-9 Kalo is imported from Slovakia and is approximately 75% German Shepherd and 25% Belgian Malinois. To date, we have raised enough money for the purchase of Kalo, but are still working towards paying for his and Officer Peters' training, as well as the equipment for the pair to operate successfully together. With that, I'll introduce K-9 Kalo and Officer Peters.
Kalo will say a little lot, but. And I just want to thank the community for stepping up and helping us out with this. You hear Corey's voice, and I'm probably going to get the same. Tough cop here. Apologize. Yeah, you say something. Cover for me. But yeah, the loss of Nico is obviously, obviously tough. But I'm excited to step up with the new guy here. And you've got a long ways to go. As you can tell, he's still a puppy. Just turned one. So, a lot of work, but I'm excited to do it. Be out of town for a while with him, but it'll all be worth in the end, I think. He'll be a good asset to the community, so.
Well, welcome. And he seems excited. He's definitely going to keep you in shape.
Oh, yeah. I need it.
Our training, also one more thing, our training group, that most of us along the Interstate I-94 train together quite often. And when a K-9 passes away, we do up a little plac or picture for the K-9. I have one myself for my first K-9, K-9 Buster. So, we'd like to present that to Officer Peters. Obviously, I just want to explain with him bouncing around like this. This is the first time we've ever purchased a totally green K-9. He has no training yet. All the rest of our K-9s have come pre-trained. This is going to be a little bit different experience for us. Now that I have a little more experience under my belt, I felt more comfortable being able to go and select a K-9 that hasn't had the actual training yet. Now that I know what to look for as far as what we need, what kind of aspects the K-9 needs. And now, Officer Peters is going to go through the training with the dogs. Every aspect he's going to see, he's going to learn a lot more that way and become a more knowledgeable K-9 handler that way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Officer Peters, I congratulate you and commend you, because I know it takes a little more work, even though he won't say it is work. It's the love of the job and so on.
Absolutely.
But we all remember Nico. And I remember when he came here, he was a fantastic dog. Wish you good luck here. And just one question, when he came in, he took two looks at Mr. Zurov. Is that?
That could mean something. We don't know yet. We'll watch him, so.
Thank you and good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you again. Well, we're going to stick with public safety. I think next up, we have the fire department.
President Decker, commissioners, sorry for me delaying getting up here. I was trying to convince Chief Dossinger to come up once again because he's so comfortable at the podium this evening. I think it would have been pretty good for that. In front of you is the fire lieutenant's job description. It is a new job description in the full-time position for the fire department. With recent changes that have been made in our structure and our relationship with the Civil Service Commission, the approval of a new job description now comes before you as the city commission. This is going to be a position that we fill internally. Actually, there's going to be three lieutenant positions, one per shift, per 24-hour shift. And it is included in the budget. And this is the job description as reviewed by and approved by HR for your consideration and for your approval.
These are not additional positions?
These are not. These are not additional. These are from within our ranks.
Any questions for Chief Seavock? Just establishing a hierarchy.
Yes.
Chain of command.
That's correct. Now, we have the structure. We have the personnel in the structure where we've grouped people together in recognized shifts, working a recognized schedule, a defined schedule. And the next thing, in a paramilitary organization like the fire department, is that a lead person in those roles really needs to be a person of rank, and this is the building block for that.
Any other questions for Mr. Kessel?
President Decker, I just wanted to point out that we provided you with the results of an engagement survey late in 2017. And although this process was underway and in place long before that engagement survey was created and administered, Chief Seavock and I have talked about things that they could do to maybe improve the scores that they received, and they weren't bad scores. I want to emphasize that. But this position is one of those things. This lieutenant's position was one of the ways that they identified that they could improve communication that happens within the department. And I just wanted to point that out before you voted on this item tonight.
That's correct. Thank you.
Questions or comments for either Mr. Kessel or the chief? Not I would look for a motion.
Make motion to approve the job description.
Second.
We have a motion to approve with a second. Any further discussion or questions for Chief Seavock? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Position is approved.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is related to this lieutenant's position. And in this process for us now, we want to include, as we do with our line firefighter positions, a written test component in our selection process to help us ensure that we get the best of our people and recognize that best candidate. We're using the same company that we use for our entry-level firefighters test. The lease agreement is simply an agreement that states that we don't have the right to reproduce the test, to pass it off to another agency, or to somehow change it and use it ourselves. And that's the lease agreement in front of you. That's been reviewed and vetted by our city attorney.
And we're looking at a total of $1,375?
Yes.
Any questions for Chief Seavock? Comments?
Sir President, I would move to approve the contract.
Second. We have a motion to approve the contract with a second. Any further discussion?
Chief, that's just a one-time fee, and we can use it as many times as we want, as long as it's in our department.
That's correct, Commissioner. Part of that fee is that this is a test being customized for our department.
Any other questions for commissioners? Hearing none will vote. Did you have a comment?
I would just a point of clarification with regards to the costs. It is a, the fee pertains to, is broken down into different segments. This time, this is what the fee is. Should you request more test booklets and that type of thing in the future, you'd be charged for that, but the agreement itself terminates 90 days after test administration, so it's a very short-term whole cost agreement.
Thank you for clarification, Martha. You still good with our? All right. We have a motion to approve with a second. Any further comments? Not will vote. Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Contract's approved. We have nothing from police, but they've been up here quite a bit tonight. So moving on to, we have nothing from engineering tonight. Public Works. Mr. Zurov?
Thank you, President Decker. The three issues, or the three items I have tonight are regarding recycling. And we've gone through this numerous times. We've had numerous meetings and presentations. And I did want to mention and tell a thank you to my staff for all the time they put into this. We've basically looked at many different options. We've come down to every other week pickup residential collection. We've looked at the different carts. We've looked at transportation costs to a material recovery facility. We've looked at the operational costs, the capital costs, revenue required, what kind of software we want. We looked at this fleet mine. We've implemented already Dickinson Works to help with the residents as far as notifying them of the service we have. So, and if you think about it to this, every other week pickup is half a times of what we have currently for residential. So we're basically having another half-time full service for residential collection. So I want to thank my staff for all the time they put into it. And so I'll get off my soapbox, and the first item we have is the solid waste fee increase. The last meeting, Mr. Prowse and I brought you a couple of options on how we would fund the residential recycling. And our understanding was the commission said to bring forward to raise the landfill disposal rate to $47 and to increase the monthly charge for residential accounts to increase it $4.25, which would make a total of $17.25. So with that, if, again, if there's any questions, please ask. Staff recommends increasing the household disposal fee to $47 and the residential collection rate to $17.25. And we're looking for an approval for this to move forward.
Okay, I guess, just for clarification, the item A is just for discussion, is what I understand. If we're okay with the 47, and then B is actually the resolution to change it to 47. Is that, I'm reading that correctly, so. I guess we'll start with A, commissioners. Are we comfortable with the 47?
Yeah. I think it's the best way to get where we need to go.
I think that's what we discussed, so.
Okay, and then I guess what we move on to is the fee schedule then, and amend that.
I was directed to have a motion to approve the first by the city attorney.
Okay, because we don't have a resolution number for the increase in A.
I believe, Mr. President, members of the commission, because at the last meeting you had indicated that you wanted to bring forward, it was envisioning a vote that this would be the fee, and then the resolution would be the amendment of the fee schedule itself.
Okay.
So as opposed to two resolutions, there would be a vote.
So we're basically gonna have to vote the one time. Basically, item B, which would be the actual amendment to the fee schedule. Am I correct?
There's only, there's the one resolution for the?
There's one resolution.
Right.
We just discussed that it might not hurt to have a motion that this is the rates you want, and then we go to a motion for the fee schedule amendment.
And we can do that, too. I mean, we can have just a motion to approve the fee. Item A, I would look, I guess, then for a motion on item A.
So moved to approve the fee schedule.
So we have?
Increase, excuse me.
We have a motion to approve the increase.
And a second.
And a second. Any further discussion from commissioners? If not, we'll vote. Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you, President Decker. The next will be the fee schedule amendment. Consideration to approve the resolution for the fee schedule for the $47 disposal rate and the $17.25 residential collection and recycling rate. This fee also includes a $20 fee schedule for special pickups.
Any comments or questions for Mrs. Zurov?
Just one question. When will this go into effect?
If we get approval tonight, we'll be looking at six months just for probably the compactor and the trailer. We're looking at hopefully October 1st at the latest right now.
So that's as soon as we'd start to change the fee? Or would the fees go into effect today?
We probably need some clarification on that.
Mr. President, members of the commission, as with, I believe, the mobile home license fee that was incorporated into the fee schedule, the fee, what the fee is can by resolution go into your fee schedule now. However, it will not be charged until the services are actually started, begin to be provided.
How do we give assurances to the public that they won't start?
Well, this will be on account. So any, we will know when we deliver a can and start the recycling. So once that is done, the new cans will have what's called RFID, so they'll be attached to that property. Once that done, download will happen, and then it'll be sent to utility billing that they have received the can and to begin implementation. Some of these might be delivered ahead of time, but we might, you know, might deliver and then start recycling, say, the next month. So we'll determine the, how we're gonna approach.
Okay, what about the $47? Does that go into effect today, though?
I would tie that to the recycle.
Okay.
I guess my concern would be is when we change the fee schedule, that somehow it's just automatically put into our billing system. And then also, we're dealing with that if, for some mishap, it gets put in there, programmed in, and all of a sudden, we have one month worth of billing, and then we're having to refund. I guess what I'm looking for is that there's some way to attach an actual, you know, like a date. But I can see where Mrs. Zurov's coming from, because he's still trying to implement and figure out, so.
Right, and we've got a lot of material to buy, a lot of implementation, so I guess.
But you're looking at October 1 for the record, since we're all here.
We're looking at 12. We're looking at a minimum of six months, so it's February, you know, the time we get everything ordered. You know, and that's pretty quick in implementation. I guess I would have to rely on finance and utility billing to, you know, that they don't, we don't implement the rates until we know it's, we've delivered the cans, and then we started the recycling.
Mr. President, members of the commission, you can authorize a contingent effective date, so the fee shall go into effect contingent upon, yeah, the services being provided with the Public Works Director indicating the date the services begin.
Okay, we have a, if you look at the memo, we have a language for the, which is pretty cut and dry. Move to approve resolution. This will be 16/20/17, 01/20/18, the amended 2018 fee schedule with what Mrs. Martha just said.
I will confirm with you.
Okay. Any more questions for Mr. Zurov or Mrs. Martha, commissioners?
I would make that motion, as you just stated, with all the caveats.
Second.
We have a motion to approve with the amendments and a second. Any further discussion or questions? Go ahead and vote. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Resolution is approved. We have a solid waste budget amendment for recycling.
President Decker, the last item I have this evening is the budget enclosed. You will find the budget amendment, the additions and changes that I made to implement the recycling. I guess, first of all, if there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer. I have included the projected revenue, the use of the recycling fund as part of our user, use of cash on hand to purchase the capital items. Again, I think we're very lucky to have that fund to help with the capital purchases. Otherwise, these rates would have been significantly more. So I guess, unless there's questions, I would make a recommendation to approve the budget for recycling.
Any questions for Mrs. Zurov?
Mr. President?
Yes.
So that fleet mine, is that an annual fee or is that a one-time fee? $10,500?
There's two fees in there. Let me find it. There, one's a capital purchase, and then one is a annual fee.
So it would, $2,100 per truck would be the annual, I'm assuming? It's under your operating budget, so I'm assuming it's an annual fee?
Yeah, if it's in there, it's probably the annual fee.
And that's for the fleet? You're talking fleet mine?
Fleet mine, right.
And then my only other thing is, we talked about this briefly last meeting, but this position that we're creating, I mean, have we come up with what the duties of this person would be and if we need to pay somebody in the $70,000 range to run recycling? I mean, I just remember when we started this, and we turned away from the contract with the other company that we were gonna hire outside. We said we could take this in-house and handle it without adding any staff, and now we're adding a $71,000 position.
I think it was discussed that hopefully we can't add any staff. Jason, I don't know if you've ever said we won't ever add any staff for the recycling in our discussions. I was hoping with the elimination of the rearload that we wouldn't have much of an addition to staff. Like I said, looking at this deeper, this is a whole nother addition to the collection side. We have changed things in the past. There used to be a chief of collection and chief of landfill. We eliminated that chief of collections and put more duties on admin assistance, and then Aaron took over more duties. I guess originally, we looked at maybe a senior in that position, and I don't think a senior position is what we want to educate the public, to be out there promoting recycling. We don't have that person, and I think that's, to me, that's needed to, if we want to sustain recycling, we need somebody that is outspoken to come to the schools, to come to different things and implement it. That $71,000 again is with all the benefits. It's not.
So roughly, what's that salary?
It's not gonna be their salary.
What's that salary breakdown to, roughly?
I'll refer to Robbie. He gave me that number.
I believe it was just over $50,000. I believe we used a step three for whatever grade we put that position at, and then take exactly 30% for benefits.
So that's including benefits, so that's, you know, a little over $20, $24 an hour, probably max.
I just remember at budget time, we eliminated positions from other departments because we were trying to balance our budget.
Well, I know we're gonna have to have the discussion, too, because I did make a promise during the budget to Chief Seavock.
That's the one I was referring to. I mean, we made him wait till 2019, so.
Right.
But we're adding a whole nother system here. I mean, it's not like we're staying status quo. We're adding a whole nother collection service of another $7,000 can, or 7,000 cans every other week with transportation to a MRF in Minneapolis. So I mean, we're adding a considerable amount of additional duties to our staff the way it is.
And another revenue stream.
And that revenue stream covers that cost, so.
That's to be debated.
Right.
So.
I guess at this point, you know, I don't see that we can implement recycling without that position.
I don't, and I agree. I don't think we can. Commissioner Frederick was saying, you know, going into the year without having to hire, and I understand why you need to hire here. And, you know, I said, we'll look at it, and hopefully after one year, we're not asking for more money from the residents, because if I look at the figures right. at the figures right, it's gonna amount to about eighty-six dollars a year per resident by the time they go from the forty-four to the forty-seven, and, plus the additional cost of four twenty-five, comes out about eighty-six dollars a resident, you know, so, you know, I, I think we're gonna have to look pretty good at these numbers at the end of the year and see what the deal is, I mean?
I'm just trying to follow the direction of the commission.
It'll be interesting to see what kinda income we generate from the materials that we're selling, and you have to remember, the recycling doesn't make money.
I'm just...
It costs us much more to haul it than the money we're gonna get at the MRF.
I'll be happy with...
But the guys that were gonna take it from us at first were planning on making money from it, but we, did they break that?
They were planning on making money from the...
Did they break that contract, or did we break that contract?
They were planning on making money from the dollars per, uh, resident.
Household.
Yes.
Okay, any other questions or comments for Mrs. Zeroff? So, we're looking at...
Just, just one more. So, when will we, we see a job description for that position?
Hopefully soon. Um, uh, of course, I wanted to wait till this was approved. If it is approved, I'll work with, uh, HR Coordinator, uh, Nemnik, and, uh, we will put something together as soon as we can. And, and again, I hope we're, we're somewhat conservative on some of our numbers. I'm hoping, uh, we've gone through these numerous times, I'm really hoping, uh, we'll stay within, uh, the, the numbers we, we propose.
Any more questions or comments for Mrs. Zeroff? Not, I would look for a motion on the budget, the solid waste budget amendment.
Mr. President, I would move to approve the solid waste budget amendment for recycling.
I'll second that.
We have a motion to approve the solid waste fund budget amendment for the collection disposal recyclables with a second. Any further discussion or questions? Not will vote. Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Friedrich?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Amendment is passed. We have nothing from planning and zoning, no reports from building codes. Item ten, public issues of city concern, not on the agenda. If you have a item of city concern, not on our agenda, please come forward, state your name, and address the commission with your concern.
My name's, uh, Al Thorstedt. This is the third time I've been up here. I'm totally against this, uh, recycling. In fact, I've made myself intelligent, I call Bismarck. They're not too excited about their program either. If you don't believe, you can call in. First of all, we've all heard the saying, "If it's not broken, why should we fix it?" We don't have a broken trash management system. This is so ridiculous. Our trash management, thanks to Gary, he's done a great job, thanks to, uh, Aaron Prowse, they've done a good job. This is gonna take more people, more trucks, more mileage, more fees, city's going broke. Bismarck doesn't even do, uh, residential. They've been in the program for four years. They don't do residential. Last year, they paid out, uh, one million two hundred thousand dollars, and guess what? They had trash moved away by another company, a trash management company. Waste Management was the name of that company, and, uh, I'm sure their costs, they, they paid for this. Waste Management made the money. They ma, they took it to Minneapolis. In the future, they're trying to get, take it to Fargo, but, well, Rapid City is thinking about another, uh, building, but, uh, I guess my concern is, public welfare and the city's budget wellness is much more important than trying to start a new program that, could be in ten years, could cost the city twenty million dollars. You don't believe that, while it's... They're gonna go broke on that six hundred and fifty thousand they're gonna get, right out the bat, just buying containers, you know, 'cause I don't think they really expect the residents to pay for it, do they? And maybe they don't. I guess the, the, the truth is, if they get another, more than one, uh, container, the residents gotta pay for it. That's called transparency. I'm trying to be honest about all this. I don't think the city's being as transparent as you think they are. You know, this recycling is not, it's not mandated by the state government. It's not even about greenpeace. It's about the city, you know, trying to improve, try to make themselves look like we're Bismarck, mandating, excuse me, I guess, man has got a program, but they share it with Bismarck, so I guess that's the cost involved, that's why they, they are spending that kinda money. Fargo doesn't have a problem with it, 'cause they, and their trash management, when they deliver, their trash is close by. I just don't think this is a good idea. You know, last year, Bismarck, they serviced, I guess they started out four years ago, they had twelve thousand residents that were mandated. They had an op-out program. They, they could op out. They had five thousand residents pop out. That's what's gonna happen here, and then you're talking about a disaster. But I'm sure Gary doesn't want an op-out program. We don't wanna talk about the do, we, that's one issue we don't wanna talk about. That's gonna lower that four hundred thousand, isn't it? Bismarck's been doing it for four years, and they still don't have an apartment. You know, we were asked, maybe every year, we're in, first, we're gonna get the apartments, and then we're gonna get the commercial. That's not gonna happen. Bismarck's been doing it for four years. They think their residential, that, what they're doing is they have a metal trash, uh, barrier, trash containers, and that's a health issue, so they're, they're, they're probably happy with their residential, but, uh, if you can call Bismarck, they lost five hundred residents on a, on an op-out. There's a lot of, uh, low-income people in this town, more than people realize. They're not gonna be too happy with figures, but I wanna congratulate you on doing this, the investigation for the last, and I hope you're happy with this program. I see there's gonna be a lot of problems, more than you think there is. And finally, like I said, why should you fix something that's not broken? Uh, maybe in the future, you'll reconsider. It's a very costly project, and a lot of people, you know, wanna recycle themselves. A lot of people can't afford it, but, city wants it, I guess, they'll have it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else that has a issue of city concern not on our agenda, please come forward. Seeing no one from the public has any other city concerns, we'll close that. Commissioners, do you have anything, for the good of the cause? Nothing from commission? We'll look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.